I'll call the January 14th, 2014 Board Supervisors Meeting to order. We have a forum. First item of business is Pastor Rick Lindemeyer to lead us in prayer. Rick?
I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight in prayer and apologize for having to leave quickly. Our church is having Bible study, and we always do on Tuesday nights, so apologize for that. From Psalm 33, we read, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord and the people whom he hath chosen for his own inheritance. Behold, the eye of the Lord is upon those that fear him, upon them that hope in his mercy to deliver their soul from death and to keep them alive in famine. Our soul waiteth for the Lord; he is our help and our shield; for our hearts shall rejoice in him because we have trusted in his holy name. Let thy mercy, O Lord, be upon us, according as we hope in thee." Let us pray. Father, we're very thankful for the United States of America, the blessing and privilege that is ours to live here and also here within the Commonwealth of Virginia, and especially here in With County. And, Lord, we know we are blessed by being here, and we thank you for these leaders as they meet together tonight. We pray your grace and blessing and just the leading of your Holy Spirit upon these who govern, who lead, and guide. Lord, give them wisdom and understanding and help them in all that they do for the betterment of this community which you have graced us to live in. Lord, thy will be done, and we ask our prayer tonight in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, the reason I called the meeting order is our annual reorganization meeting. First item of business is the rules of procedure for 2014. Gentlemen, you have those rules in the board package. Okay, with them, somebody make a motion to approve.
Mr. Stoughton, I'd like to offer an amendment to the rules of procedure, and I think I've sent it out to everyone. Everyone has it, and it's just a different way of selecting chair and vice chair, and it's on a rotational basis. You know, the motion begins with the supervisors at large, and then goes up through the districts. So, I, you know, everybody has that, so I'd make that as a motion if there's a second so that there, you know, can be any discussion.
Mr. Housman, since it's not on the agenda, could you read that off?
Yeah, this is an amendment offered to the rules of procedure, Article 3, Officers, 3.1, Chair and Vice Chair. Chair bill shall be selected for a one-year term on a rotating basis beginning in 2014. The positions of Chair and Vice Chair will rotate in the following manner. The Supervisor at Large will be Chair, and the Supervisor from District 1 will be Vice Chair. In the following year, the Supervisor from District 1 will be Chair. Supervisor from District 2 will be Vice Chair. In the following year, the Supervisor from District 2 will be Chair, and the Supervisor from District 3 will be Vice Chair. And it goes on down to, you know, the Supervisor from District 6 will be Chair, and the Supervisor at Large will be Vice Chair, and the following year, the rotation restarts. In a situation where a newly-elected Supervisor would be in line to be Chair, the next Supervisor with experience would move to Chair, and the normal rotation would resume. In a situation where an elected Supervisor would be in line to be Chair or Vice Chair and declines the position, then the next Supervisor in the rotation with experience would move to Chair or Vice Chair, and the normal rotation would resume. So, that's the motion.
I second that motion. Okay, so the motion is, I'm not going to restate it, is read by Mr. Housman, seconded by...
You want to copy it?
Supervisor.
I don't know why I got two.
McRoberts. Is any other further discussion?
You all go ahead.
Well, I, you know, the reason for, you know, for this, you know, a couple of reasons. One is that, you know, the Board of Supervisors is charged with making policy and budgetary decisions, and we, you know, we talk about, you know, politics not playing, you know, a part in it. And, you know, it just seems to me that, you know, rotational Chair and Vice Chair would continue to take any, you know, politics out of it or any, you know, any sort of political pressure. Also, yeah, it seems to be a good time to do it now because we don't have a returning Chairman. And, you know, and I outlined, you know, pros and cons in the email that I sent to you all. But that is, you know, that would allow every one district in the county to have their representative at one time or another serve as a Chair and Vice, or Vice Chair. Yeah, that way, you know, there are, you know, probably some, you know, some good, you know, competent, you know, people on the board that would like, you know, would take the opportunity to do it, but they don't want to try to, you know, to garner votes. So, this just seems to be, you know, a way to do it that would be fair and would be easy and would take any political, you know, things out of it. Also, it's not a new idea. This is something that apparently several counties around do. They do rotate their Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Housman, for putting together this document so we can actually look at it. You emailed it to us. I looked at it. I have concern about it in that local government is the very foundation of a representative democracy. And I can't vote for something that takes away our right to hold our leaders accountable. We elect in an open and free election the first meeting of every new year, and it gives all of us an opportunity to either support or not support the leadership. And I believe that that's pretty dear to not give up that right to hold leadership responsible.
Any other Supervisor will like to speak? I like this, being able to run this meeting. No one else wishing to speak? We'll proceed with the vote then. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
No.
Aye.
No.
Nay.
Motion fails four to three. We still have before us the requirement to pass the rules of procedure for 2014. I would request, or ask for a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion that we accept the rules of procedure as presented in the board package.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I don't see here, but the one thing that we had, we had talked about, I thought that we were going to change in the, in the rules of procedure was during Citizens Time, that, you know, we would hold people to the three minutes if there were over seven speakers. And that, we talked about that, but that's not, that's not included. So, if, you know, we...
You are correct.
We talked about that, so, you know, however, we need to amend that.
I would, Mr. Hall, would you be willing to amend that motion and include that clarification?
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to include on 6.3, a three-minute time limit for Citizens Times for any speaker if we have over seven folks sign up.
I'll second that motion. amended motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? If none, I'd call for the vote to Mr. Hall.
Aye.
Mr. Hale?
Aye.
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 Seven oh, seven zero to adopt the rules of procedure as amended, based to amend 6.3 to include the time limits. The next item is election of Chair for 2014. I'd open up the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Reeves, Supervisor at Large.
Okay. Mr. Reeves has been nominated. Are anybody willing to second that?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Any other nominations from the board? Not to ask for a motion to close the nominations, or I will close the nomination process then. All those in favor? I'm going to take a voice vote. Gene?
Aye.
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 I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Reeves. Here is the gavel. I'll relinquish my power and...
Have a court, Lee, it wasn't.
It wasn't.
Check the seat, it's left handed.
That happens to me a lot, Joe.
Okay. The next order of business on the agenda is election of Vice Chair. I'll open the floor for nominations. Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Hall.
I'll second that nomination.
Do I have any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Hale. He's been in that seat for a couple of years. I think he deserves a vote to stay there.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have two nominations for Vice Chair, Mr. Hall and Mr. Housman. Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the floor for nominations. Mr. Dalton, how do we proceed when we have...
By understanding, the rules of procedure is the first person nominated, you vote upon that person until somebody is elected.
Okay. I'll call for the vote, a voice vote. Mr. Horni?
We're voting aye.
Voice vote for election of Mr. Hall?
Mr. Hall is Vice Chair.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Four to three. Mr. Hall is elected to Vice Chair. The next order of business on the agenda is, is it late, election or naming of pro temp? As Chair, I'm going to name Joe Hale as pro temp. Next order of business is Citizens Time. We have one citizen that signed up. Ms. Myers has two subjects to speak about. If you would, add your name and your address for the record, please.
Linda Meyer, 1118 Dry Road Speedway, 24374. I was on the county website the other day, and I'd like to see a couple of improvements. If we could also add to the sidebar a link for the Virginia Constitution, contact information for each Board of Supervisor, the search engine for the Code of Virginia, local voter registration link, and also a link for the Virginia State Board of Elections. Would that be possible? We have a technology department. A lot of other counties have that, and it would be very helpful to the taxpayers.
Okay, we'll check into it, see if that can be done.
Who wants this?
Or just give it to Mr. Bear.
Okay. Okay, I have another question also. In Saturday's newspaper, we're advertising for the Economic Development Executive, and I was wondering if we had stats about how many inquiries we've had at the Joint IDA per week or per month or for the whole year of 2013? Does anyone know that?
Inquire.
Inquiries about Progress Park.
Progress Park. I don't have the number in front of me. Mr. Dalton?
I said, the board, we can publish that. There was a list of contacts that were made that we provided the Board of Supervisors. The board, two meetings ago, had asked for the same information.
Okay.
So, we do have that.
So, there were inquiries anyway? Are we, are we under contract with anybody? Anything happening?
Well, if there were a contract, I could tell you, but if there's not, then...
So, there's no big inquiries? We've got no fish on the line?
Why, I can't say that either.
Oh, it's a big secret?
Well, that's one of the things for industrial development, unannounced businesses, or if you're in any of the process, that you don't talk about those.
Well, I was concerned because we're going into another budget process, and of course, that is a, an outlay of the county. It is another employee. We, last year, you, we have an executive, an assistant to the Executive Director that was hired. Could that person go into that position or not have an executive, have that person take care of those inquiries and whatever would be necessary in the office so we could possibly save a salary and everything that goes along with that salary? Could that possibly happen? The money, is it well-spent? I don't know when to have more than one people, one person in that position. It's a little, it's, it seems to be of little consequence to the taxpayers with county, but it certainly does add up to our budget. Since we have no imminent sale and the economic climate is very slow, could this be handled by the assistant executive or, and other in-house people? Also, I stopped there the other day at the office, and I was looking for the periodicals and a list of places where we could find Progress Park information, and I was told that there weren't any. And I was given two pieces of paper here about Progress Park and the characteristics of so on of Block 24. We're paying Virginia Corridor for advertising upwards of 20 grand a year, and is this all we have to show for it? It would be interesting to know where they go, what they do, and so on, so the taxpayers would know where their money is going instead of, we need a little bit more transparency for that. Also, in the Virginia Farm Bureau magazine, Virginia just opened trade offices in Canada and all, and other countries. I was wondering if we could get more than two pieces of papers, perhaps a video? Could we get something done like that and get it out to these other agricultural, industrial in the world? Because we, we do what? We have agribusiness here, we have wine, we have beef, we have forestry products and so on, so they would come under this heading also. So, I'll give Mr. Bear this information if he could possibly get it to the right people, and maybe we can get some more information all over the place. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Ms. Myers, before you take off, all right, the county website does have the voter registration and the board members and all their contacts.
Okay.
On the sidebar, and you go down to voter registration, you get all that.
Okay, I was on the homepage.
Yeah, you've got to go over and hit Departments on the sidebar.
Okay, I didn't realize that these guys were in the Departments, per se.
Yeah, and main menu, but everyone, anything from the, you can get anything from the board members, their addresses, the meeting dates, the videos, the rules of procedure.
Okay.
Everything about the county is on that.
On that, okay.
On that sidebar.
All right, I was just looking on the homepage itself.
Yeah, you got to go to that sidebar and hit that, where it says Departments.
Right, and other people have asked me, and I did not know that they should go to Departments.
Right.
I thought that was especially kind of vital.
Okay.
Thanks a bunch.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. There's no one else that's signed up that anybody coming late would like to speak? You're welcome to come forward, and we'll hear what you have to say. Seeing none, we'll move on down the agenda. We have the minutes of the previous meeting of December the 20th, 2013. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes for December the 20th, 2013, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Next order of business on the agenda is payment of invoices. I have a motion to pay the invoices.
I make that motion that we pay the invoices as presented.
I'll second that.
Are there any invoices anybody would like to discuss? Hearing none, I'll call for roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye, seven zero, pay the invoices. The next order of business is new business. When it comes down to new business, we have the budget calendar for 2014. I hope each one of yous had a chance to look at it. Does anybody have any problem with any of the dates that's been posted?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll ask, is, is 1/28 when we meet to set the initial budget parameters and goals?
Actually, it's the 16th.
The 16th, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, then the next, the next meeting of anybody involved in the budget would be the revenue projections?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions about the budget calendar?
And the ones highlighted are involved board members?
Yes, sir, except for the revenue projection, which is the Small Budget Committee.
I have a motion that we adopt the budget calendar for fiscal year 2015.
As amended to the 16th?
Yes, as amended, the first, the, set the parameters, the first to 16th of 2014.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Calendar is adopted. Next order of business is the meeting calendar for 2014. I have a motion that we set the meeting calendar for 2014.
I make that motion.
I'll second. Do I have any questions about the meeting calendar?
Question on November 26th, December 24th, there's a circle with a dashed line around it. Looking at the key, I don't know what that, what that means.
It's a half-day, whole-day.
Okay.
And those with the dashed are, the governor has already decreed those for next year.
Okay.
And we will add the dashed line in the legend at the bottom.
Does anybody have any other questions about the meeting calendar for 2014? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the meeting calendar for 2014, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Calendar is adopted. Next order of business is Economic Development Committee report.
I can do that. The Economic Development Committee met on January 9th, has one recommendation, and that is to prepare a request for proposal for a developer to promote the expansion of the mixed beverage corridor.
Come from committee, needs no second, have any discussion?
You want to explain that?
It's just to do an RFP, a request for proposal, for an economic developer to give some ideas about the corridor along the interstate, how we can promote it.
And that person would also have knowledge of the motel, hotel, restaurant industry? That they could actually identify those kind of people that would locate and the success ratio and have those contacts? What we discussed is that last year, the General Assembly put together or approved our request for this mixed beverage, but it's sort of been stagnant, and the only way to jumpstart it is to get somebody out there that is an expert in that field, and actually, it's a request for proposals, but we'd also asked that that be a contingency based. If you located somebody and designated those people, then you would get paid. Otherwise, you're probably not getting paid.
Okay. Makes sense now that you explained it that way.
It said expansion, so I thought you was trying to expand the corridor part.
No, we're trying to make it successful.
You're just trying to advertise it, but basically.
And actually, give somebody some incentive. If we have that person under an RFP, then...
Makes sense.
The more success they have in locating somebody, then they get paid.
Yeah.
I mean, sort of like a Realtor, in a way.
Gina, I'd like to add that that discussion is to help promote all business. They don't necessarily have to be involved with the mixed drinks side of the corridor, but to develop all the business that we can attract into a corridor, and this is something that we can do self-help to help ourselves instead of waiting on the other organizations to bring something to us.
Well, I mean, it makes sense when you explain it. It's just the word expansion, to me, made it sound like we were trying to expand the corridor. And I mean, I was like, what kind of business have we got coming in there that we need to make it bigger than it is?
Do we have any other discussion on it? Okay, I'll take a vote to prepare a request for proposal for a developer to promote the expansion of the mixed beverage corridor. I'll call for a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye, passes seven to zero. Next order of business on the agenda is appointments of committees. I prepared the list for Steve. I think Martha may have it, or Mr. Dalton may have it.
I do have it. It's laying on my desk. Apologize for that.
Steve, you'll get the list in, it's about four pages long, right?
No, it's not quite that long.
And everybody else's appointments will stay the same unless you would like to be taken off or moved to, or like, would like something else. And I'm also going to appoint Mr. Hale to the Personnel Committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would request not to serve on the, you know, Chief Local Electoral Official Board. I'll be glad to take... I'll be glad to take something else.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, I'm not doing that to try to certainly get out anything. You give me something else, I'll take it.
I'll look at that and I'll, I'll look at that. I know we have appointments of the Tourism Committee. I'll start with, I'll start with Gene.
I will appoint the same person I've had, I was trying to find it, because I don't want to pronounce the name wrong. Melissa Druin is my appointee now, and as far as I know, she will continue to be, if that's approved.
What was her name?
Melissa Druin. D-R-U-I-E-N.
It's on page 55.
I was trying to tell him that, but I couldn't figure out what page it's on.
Okay, I found it. All in favor of reappointing Ms... I can't even find it. Melissa Durin? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. She's reappointed. Mr. McRoberts, your appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anybody yet for the Cubanism Committee. A boy that was served on last, the last year, he said we'd give him what he needs with the fire and rescue, so now I got to find somebody young.
Okay, we'll skip that appointment until the next meeting. Mr. Willis? Mr. Ron Keim said he would like to do it again, and I'm going to give him that opportunity. Okay. All in favor of reappointing Mr. Ron Keim, say aye.
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 Opposed. Mr. Ron Keim is reappointed. Mr. Hale, I mean, Mr. Hall?
I have confirmed Patty Pizzinger would like to, so I'm appointing her.
Okay, all in favor of Patty Pizzinger for reappointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mrs. Pizzinger is reappointed to the Tourism Committee. Mr. Housman?
Jim Lloyd.
Okay. All, all in favor of reappointing Mr. Lloyd to the Tourism Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Lloyd is reappointed. Mr. Hale?
Mr. Manley contacted me by email and expressed that he would serve, would like to appoint David Manley.
All in favor of reappointing Mr. Manley back to the board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Manley is reappointed. My appointee is Ms. Ellen Reynolds. She has agreed to serve another, another term. All in favor of reappointing Mrs. Reynolds to the Tourism Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The Tourism Committee has been set. Mr. Dalton, what other appointments do we need to make tonight?
The three board members just got elected or reelected, need to make their appointments to the Planning Commission?
Okay.
I'll be glad to start.
Okay.
District One, if you like. Me too. Spoken with Mr. Timothy Carter, and he would like to, you know, to serve another term.
Okay, everybody in favor of Mr. Carter being reappointed to the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Carter is reappointed. Mr. McRoberts?
Robert Walker has agreed to stay on the Planning Commission.
Okay, everybody in favor of Mr. Walk being reappointed to the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Mr. Walker is reappointed. Mr. Willis? Your Clifford has agreed to stay on the Planning Commission. Okay. Everybody in favor of Mr. Clifford being reappointed to the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Clifford is reappointed. Mr. Dalton, what other appointments needs to be made tonight?
Bye-bye. Mr. Housman stepped down as the Chief of Local Electoral Official, that always falls to the chairman, doesn't designate somebody, they will be peed in like next week.
I'm going to designate Mr. Willis to that committee.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize.
District Three?
District Three appointment, I am willing to serve again on the District Three Board. If y'all will see fit for me to do that. All in favor of... Mr. Dalton, I need to step down and let Mr. Hall do that?
I would think if somebody would nominate you, you'd be a proper...
I'll nominate Supervisor Chairman Reeves to serve on District Three.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Reelected.
Now, we're planning District Commission, a board member who serves on it.
I hear a nomination for the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission.
Mr. McDaniel had served on that. Actually, he called me dinner night, and he had meant that he represented us in January of the next meeting, we didn't fit.
And I would be willing to serve on that commission. I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, the next appointment is the... I'm lost, Mr. Dalton, again.
We've started, jumped around the Wall of Honor Committee, the Council. We typically have, either east or west of it, will represent and serve on that.
I'll do it, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. That would be my nomination.
I think I'm on that.
All in favor of Mr. Hale serving on the...
Mr. Hall.
Mr. Hall.
I want Mr. Hale.
He really loves Smithville.
Lost on this. Mr. Hall serving on the Wall of Honor Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Congratulations, Mr. Hall.
And the Joint Public Service Authority, Mick and Link, and Mr. McDaniel, who has served on that.
And I will be willing to serve on it again. But I'll open the floor for nominations.
Do they meet tomorrow night, guys?
I'll nominate Chairman Reeves.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, next one, Mr. Dalton.
The Mount, the Community Action Committee, Mr. Bear and Ms. Reeves?
I have talked to Ms. Reeves, and she said she would serve again. She hadn't served, we nominated her a month or so ago. I think two months ago, she's been to one meeting, and she said she would serve again. And Mr. Bear?
I serve the pleasure of boards, so but I'm willing to serve again.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Bear and Mrs. Reeves?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. They are reappointed.
And I think I understood earlier, maybe I was wrong, that most of the rest of these have agreed to continue on, so that there can just be a vote to do that, those that are serving.
Okay.
Your Clifford, the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission usually recommends to us, must represent. Have they taken that up?
Are we organization meetings next meeting?
So except for that, nobody's going to serve as is. Make a general motion, and all those that need to be reappointed, for all these boards and authorities, be reappointed.
Before we do that, can I withdraw from one? Well, the District Three Governmental Cooperative Alternative, I mean, normally you go to all the meetings, but with you have more meetings, you may miss more. But I have, they meet the third Thursday, and I already have a meeting the third Thursday of every month. So if someone else would be interested in being the alternate, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Willis?
I'll be an alternate.
I'll appear to be the alternate for the District Three. Can do. All in favor of Mr. Willis being the alternate for District Three Governmental Cooperative, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Chairman of the Mountain Dalton, is DSS, it's not on this list, but... Mr. McDaniel, a board member for DSS. Mr. McDaniel had been serving on that.
I am willing to serve on that also, if I have a motion. We'll open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Mr. or Chairman Reeves to serve on DSS Committee.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. For the rest of appointments, do I have a motion to reappoint all but... But which one?
The A Corridor and the Southwest Regional Enterprise Center Board, I'd like to talk to you about that issue. I'll actually come up in our votes and discussions.
Okay. So blanket motion for all other appointments except for them two, A Cor. I have a motion for a...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So ordered. Next thing on the agenda is an engineering agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may. We have a water meeting next Tuesday. I have a doctoral appointment, and I, I don't really want to cancel it until it takes a long time to get one. Can we change that date?
Y'all three can change it anytime y'all like, we'll be here. What time, when?
Pick a date.
It's at 11 o'clock. Can we do it Monday or Wednesday or?
How about Wednesday, Monday's a holiday.
Any day, other than that.
You said you'd be here.
I will, but Martha...
No. I'm going to get hit.
For those who serve on the committee, noted, I'm sure that making really big decisions, Martha's got to be here.
It's Wednesday, all right, you?
Wednesday's fine, I mean.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Unless we're two hours late to school.
Okay. We'll go on with the agenda now. Next order of business is the engineering agreement with P and Boards. This is amendment to the owner engineering agreement. Mr. Dalton, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, sir. When we finish Route 619 Water Project, we have additional funds left over. We petitioned the world development to allow us to use those to extend along Route 94 all the way up to Slap Town Road. And this is, P and Boards was the original engineer, and this is amendment to the contract allowing the design up to the intersection of Slap Town Road and Route 94. That eliminates a section of pipe that we have leaks with. Otherwise, we turn the money back and we kind of go.
An amount for the basic services is $21,300. And for the environmental report is $1,000. I have a motion that we approve the amendment to the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Say.
Any discussion?
What size line is that? What, what do you think's going back?
Currently, it's a six inch. It's an eight, we replaced it with an eight inch from 90. It started down in Austinville, came up all the way, 619 to Fortis Cross Road, and we brought it all the way through Watson's Vine to... There's an offset in the road there, Bill Barker's place, and so we'll take it, that offset, all the way to Slap Town. What mile, four?
I don't think, I'm not sure.
Would be upgraded to an eight?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
We'll be back in a minute. We'll take it as far as the dollars allows. It will be designed to Slap Town Road. But it turns out that the bids are over, but we will only take it as far as the dollars allows.
Well, it needs to be replaced at, they've had a lot of trouble right there, before we turned it up into Slap Town.
But my concern is whatever those dollars will buy an eight inch line instead of putting a six back.
Okay, we have the motion on the floor. I'll call for a roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, passes seven to zero. Next thing on the agenda is a court order from the Circuit Court Judge here in With County. For the proper disposition of Ralph Brown, who... Date of birth is March 15th, 1959, and further appearing that Ralph Smith was a resident of With County and was found deceased in With County, Virginia, and further appearing that the body of Ralph Smith between Ralph Brown has been in the possession of Carrington Place and With County Community Hospital since December 21st, 2013, and is further appearing that the representatives of Carrington Place have provided the next of kin with the right to claim the body for disposition, but the next of kin has refused to claim the body for dis, but therefore present Virginia Code Section 32... Therefore, present Virginia Code Section 32.1-288 on the base, and based on the representation and representatives of Carrington Place have made to the Commonwealth Attorney of With County, is hereby ordered that the sheriff of With County accept the body of Ralph Smith for proper disposition. It is further ordered that any responsible reasonable cost associated with the proper disposition be borne by the county of With. It is further ordered that the certificate certified copy of this order be provided to W. D. King, Sheriff of With County, and to R. C. L. Dalton, County Administrator. Mr. Dalton, we need to amend and appropriate money for this.
If it's okay, we'll just include that on the consent calendar for the actual cost. The sheriff told me that it's the same cost, which was about $300 or so, the last. If it's okay, just get the actual bill, put it on the consent calendar next time, as long as we have the... We don't have any recourse.
May I ask, is there a set, a set amount? I mean, I don't know how this works. Do we have, does the sheriff's department have a contract with the funeral home or? Because this is the second, second time, third time? Okay.
We have, I don't know, we do not have it right, but we have sort of, I guess, an old term, which is not the proper term, but a popper's...
Right.
$300 or so. If you want us to get a real contract with the two funeral homes, we'll be glad to do that.
No, the reason I ask is you said you thought it was going to be about, about the same. I didn't know if we had, like, you know, a set amount that we pay.
I asked two, it was around that $3.50.
Okay.
I have a question. All these that are directed by the court, who collects the social security benefit?
That's a good question, Mr. Ray.
That's about $155,000 or something, and that would help offset the cost.
The bank. The bank. I want to apologize, Mr. Bowen, instead of Brown. I have my eyes dilated this afternoon, I can't have to see, so...
We were counting on the sheriff to get the right guy.
Yeah.
I will have, I think I'll say about that court order specifically says we're going to pay the, probably, I'll go by and talk to Joe Walker, probably says appropriate funding can be used to that.
So at this time, we will wait to the next meeting, it'll be on the consent calendar. Mr. Dalton, before we recess until Thursday, do we have any other thing to bring before the board?
Mr. Hale had an item that he discussed about the road down to Fort Chiswell there, he had some pictures and things. I would ask, and I think most of you have seen it, but I'd like to ask permission to meet with VDOT, discuss that situation and see if we can get this off. For those who haven't seen the letter and pictures, Joe has over there.
This is something we've dealt with before with VDOT, and they did take some action and put up some signs, but people follow GPS and CB directions better than they do signs. And when they're coming, I guess technically you're going east or north on Pepper's Ferry Road. And the GPS says turn right, they turn right. And then they get to a place at Pentecostal Church that they can't make that curve. And also, that's county-owned right of way, so I think Mr. Dalton can bring some solution to bear. The signs helped a little bit, but it's still occurring two, two times a month. It's amazing to me they're not being reported to the sheriff's department. That's what VDOT told us the last time, that these trucks getting in that hole, I think Mr. McRoberts told us that's a $2,500, $3,500. Is that what you said, to get a mount? They fall in, that gives a whole new meaning to drop inlet. We have a letter that I've shared with the other board from Reverend Taylor on another appeal, and very nice letter, and he actually showed pictures of the trailer in there. So, really, if you want access to this, you're welcome to look at it.
I just ask for permission from the board for Mr. Hale to have a word with VDOT to come to some resolution because it's damaging church parking lot, private property.
You know, most...
It's getting better when they assign no truck, whatever they assign. It's got nowhere, people can't, truck drivers can't read.
Mr. Dalton, have you, have you talked to the railroad about closing?
I, I can't remember the lady's name, but we have been trying to set up that meeting with her. We will try again.
You know, most places have a, if you're trying to get back to 81, they'll have 81 with an arrow in the under, telling you go on further. And if you need to turn, they'll have one turning that way. That would be a better solution than what they got down there now.
That's probably a pretty brilliant $200 solution if you put the high 8177 sign right at the intersection on the other side with an arrow straight ahead. Most people can understand that. That may be the cheapest solution I've heard.
Do they have one of them, what kind of sign do they have there right now? No trucks or do not follow your GPS? Do they have one of them?
No, they don't have those. They thought an 81 sign would cure the problem, but they didn't put it in the right place for it to cure the problem.
I think another one round the other side of that road before they turn, Joe.
Yeah, the GPS is still saying turn right, and the arrow's up the road a little bit saying go straight. So they turn right.
Relocation on that side may be the answer.
Well, it's not that far down, down there to the next place where you can turn right. You ought to be able to see it further ahead. If I'm a driver, and I'm looking ahead, dude.
Well, if you have it on the other side of there section, like you said, they'll continue on. They'll know better. I think.
Of course, if they don't listen, they know what's going on.
That's a good cheap solution, but still not going to fix the problem and the damage that's been done by the multitude of trucks that's been in there. It's a pretty good mess. I went by there and looked at it again today. It's damaged all the drain pipes that come in there, and now there's slab of concrete in the way. An experienced driver that knows it's there, if there's not a car parked on the other side of the road, he can get by there. But if he's never been through there before, he's going to put the rear tandems in the hole. It's a big hole.
Is it VDOT's responsibility to replace that inlet?
Yeah, I think the last time they gave us a song and dance, that it wasn't Thursday, but I think, my personal opinion, it's in the right of way. At some point, whether they acquiesce by not telling somebody to move it, if it can't. I think that may be attacked when we need, when we can say you need to fix this. And they have, and I think maybe a couple of you guys heard the other day, that they talked about their safety money, which could be used to solve this problem.
I know this is not on the agenda, Mr. Dalton, but, and we'll get to this in a minute, do we have the consensus of the board to let Mr. Hall, I mean Mr. Hale and Mr. Dalton proceed with talking to VDOT to see if we can clarify this problem?
I think so.
That's done. Mr. Dalton, would you like to give a report on the, the meeting we had with VDOT around exit?
If I may, one more item before we do that. Last board meeting, we had a semi-proposal from Will and Peter Center to do an impact study. And I laid on your desk today, I told you I'd bring the final contract back. This is the contract that they sent us. A research funding agreement between the director and visitors of the University of Virginia, with county board supervisors, and this will, it's the same cost, but this is documentation, and I've asked for permission, sign the contract so we can move forward with the impact. Appalachian Ag Co., which has exposition, send the economic impact study.
Okay, do I have a motion to give Mr. Dalton permission to move, to sign this contract and move forward with this?
I would make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Last item, we met with the Virginia Department of Transportation and a consultant concerning Exit 77 last week sometime. And one of the things they're looking at, short-term solutions to exit problems or malfunctioning exit there, and there were quite a few items thrown out. Anything for puppy tracks, I think is the terminology they use, which are dots to tell you where to go, to some additional signage and all kinds of alternatives. Some of which seem more confusing to me than the current problem. Consultant is going to bring back some cost and proposals. One of the things that we suggested was slip ramps and relocation, and actually maybe some roundabouts of those intersections and relocation of the frontage right around the truck stops there on the south side. Not both sides at this point, but the south side, try to, because that's where most of the problems with all the commercial businesses are. So we are proceeding with that, but as part of that, I contacted the property over there, and I have a client, his business associate, the meeting, looking at some of those proposals to see if they'll work with us on some of those right of ways. Short-term fixes are a big problem for people. People pull up there and just hang, they don't know which way to go.
And they are trying to get federal money, the, the work on this intersection up there. And Donnie Nasser from VDOT said that, you know, if they separate, they were talking about, they had an estimate of what, $20 million, but that was to fix both sides, and that was to take the service roads behind the truck stops. And this, I think they come to the conclusion that if they just tried to do the worst side, the south side, because the north side, they don't really have any real great problems on that side. You don't have the volume of traffic going on that side of the, the exit, on that north side of the interstate. And that's really what they would prefer to do, is relocate the service roads behind the, behind the truck stops. And to do that, they would have to move the ramps to back. And if they done that, they could get some federal money for that.
But this year probably puppy tracks, future years, some real money. But part of our discussion, some of the property that was around there, got a lot of the development of the land, if we had a special tax district, that they could actually pay for it, and then actually develop for some of that property, so just set.
This is down, that Burger King?
Yes, sir.
Well, the big confusion is, they just need to put another stop sign in there when you come up off the interstate, so that it's a four-way stop, because that's where the confusion is. Nobody knows what to do when you're coming off the interstate. Yeah, who has the right of way? If, if they just put another, you know, made it a four-way stop, it would be, you know, a lot less confusing.
Yeah, I suggested putting flashing lights, red, I said green, but they can't put green. Yellow, you know, coming across the bridge, make that yellow where people know that they had to, they could go, they went and didn't have to stop. But Donnie said that that would confuse older individuals.
And the stop signs, one of the reasons it doesn't work out, the closeness of the stop signs on the ramp and left turn lanes that are going north of, and maybe one south of 77, that it tends to clog up. And if you put another stop sign there, and somebody just stops, that backs traffic out on the interstate.
Yeah, of course, it's been backed out before.
Well, that's, and that, that is the problem. They come up the interstate and local residents know just to keep going with the flow. People, it's their first time getting off, they'll turn and then they'll stop. And they look, and then that backs up everything else. And that's what they're trying to, they come to a short-term solution on how to fix that. And they said puppy tracks, or they dotted the lines on through the intersection. Thank you, Mr. Dalton, for the update on that. You need to know, before we recess, how many of us is going to the Local Government Day?
We've gotten some rooms, but Martha needs to know as soon as possible how many people are going to Legislative Day. We plan on going down on, this is six, and I think we're going down on the fifth. And we need to know how many people are going to Roll Con, that on the fifth, too. So everybody just email or tell Martha that you're going, she'll get you registered.
Okay, Mr. Dalton, is anything, any other business to bring before the board?
Nothing I know of, I know it, just, everybody's thinking, Mr. Hale and some of the committees have given us some items that they want to see in next year's budget. Be thinking about each one of them, what goals the county are for next year, so that we can address those as we prepare the budget to present to the full board. Some of the committees have got some things that they directed us to include, and we'll share that Thursday. Whatever goals that you believe in for next year, just be thinking about that. Road projects, schools, buses, dispatch.
Okay, everybody be thinking about that. And no other business. We'll recess this meeting until Thursday, January 16th, at 3:00 PM.